Here.
Reaper, here, Pearson.
Here.
Stahl.
Here.
Well, here. And Mr. Rethen, would you lead us in flag?
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, beginning this evening, we have a recognition of visitors.
Yeah, I had, Mike Oakley had a list of things that you wanted to address with the board. So at this time.
Okay, so, Mr. Oakley, you could stand and go over your topics with us. We'll give you a few minutes to do that. I'd like to first remind the board that, as with any visitor, these topics are for listening. If there's any of you that would like to take a certain topic and put it on the agenda for next month or whenever, you can contact myself or Mr. Meadows to do so.
Okay, if I say it.
I guess.
Okay. As you know, I emailed the board members with some questions I have for the district, including the superintendent. I'd just like some answers from the superintendent on these items. Obviously, they're open order. My first item is the district's reasoning for not having a centralized registration or an online registration that was requested by the community at the July meeting. You know, to make it more convenient for parents instead of having to drive in to multiple campuses across the district, say, up here in the central location of the high school. That was my first one.
I think it might be easier to address.
One-on-one.
Yeah. I guess, first of all, you said that the community requested this. Was this a request from you or was it a group of people? Because I've never had anybody else contact my office with this being an issue other than you.
When I attended the July meeting, and I live in the community, and it was one of my requests, I was just wondering why we didn't contact you.
I think that was after June, but, go ahead.
Well, I think one of the concerns that, from the administrators that we had, was the fact of transferring large amounts of student data from one building to a centralized location and having to take all that back. Also, trying to find a space in the high school that would accommodate everybody, that would accommodate the large number of people that were in here, and that would also be air-conditioned, because it is a long day for our secretaries that start this at 11:00 a.m. and are here until 7:00 a.m. without much of a break. I think that's the main reason, is the fact that, you know, just because we've always done it a particular way doesn't mean it's the best way, but, again, talking with the secretary, speaking with them before registration and talking with them afterwards, and I've done this since I was a building principal, they prefer to keep it in their own buildings.
And the online registration?
I think that's something that maybe we can possibly look at and see if our current student management system will handle the online registration. We did that before, and the problem was, we really didn't have a good system of payment for that, and so, for example, Carol would get a check from a parent for a certain amount. Well, there was no breakdown of where all those funds should go, and it made it extremely difficult for her to try to figure out how much went to the lunch account, how much went to their student at the high school as opposed to maybe their student at the middle school. It was kind of a bookkeeping nightmare. There are programs out there, and I had talked with this man this morning about the possibility of seeing what our student management program will do before looking into maybe purchasing a program, but online registration is, I agree, something that would be very beneficial, something we could do.
Is that one of our goals for next year?
It would be one of mine, I guess. I don't know if it's necessarily the board's goal or not.
I would like to see numbers on it, see what can be done and what costs, because I think it would be beneficial.
Okay. Moving on, item number two, I'm just requesting an update on the mandatory let testing by the state, how the district's doing.
This is going to be done by a company called Ideal Environmental, and they're out of Bloomington, Illinois, and as a matter of fact, they start tomorrow morning at 5:00 a.m. at the East Campus, and then they will go over to West. Only the elementary buildings are required to be tested right now, and they do it by source. Any of the fountains that an elementary student could use, or any of the water that would be used for cooking purposes would be tested. And it's $40 per source, and there's roughly 21 sources in the two buildings together, and that's $840. It'll probably take about four weeks to get the results back, because we have every elementary in Illinois right now being tested. And we have up to December to get the testing done, and that, really, that's the only thing in the statute that speaks of is when it has to be completed, not when the results have to get back, but a representative of the state said it would take about four weeks, and I'll share that with the board at a meeting when I get those back.
Are you aware of other districts testing their whole district, high schools and middle schools included, since there's functions where, you know, the younger children will be drinking out of these sources?
I've not heard of that, but I really haven't asked any other districts on what they're doing as far as their testing.
All right, and on the topic of water, it's come to the attention that there's bottled water being brought to the high school. What is the need for bottled water being brought to the high school when we're connected to the village water?
I'm not sure what originated it, because there have been, we've had a company bring in the coolers in the water since back in the Wayne Honeycutt era, ever since I've been back as an administrator and gone to meetings in his office. There's always been a cooler and a thing of water there. Those are located in the superintendent's office, the kitchen, faculty lounge, and the bus barn. And I can say, from my office, it's nice when people come in, we have visitors, have meetings in there to have water for the people to come in and drink. Same way with the faculty lounge, and the fact that they can go in there at lunch and have water right there in the lounge that has a cooler, it's cold. And bus barn, I guess, would provide for the bus drivers when they come in. Again, this is something that's been, that we've had in the district for at least 11 years that I'm aware of, and maybe longer than that.
Okay, so that answers my next question. So it's just staff that has access to this water and not students?
Typically, it would be staff. I know that after school, a lot of times, the kitchen is left open, and athletic programs, some of the athletes would then have access to ice and the water that is located in there. I know that they do use that at times.
Do you know when was the last time that the water was tested at the high school at the fountains?
I don't. To my knowledge, it's never been tested.
Never been tested?
Township, every township reports their own water testing that they provide to all residents, so that's done on a regular basis in Nyana, Eliopolis, and Harris.
Yeah, it's done at the plant, but it's not done at the distribution points at the school. Okay. Moving on, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Same About Youth League. I've spoken with the other board members. I've emailed requesting a change in the policy for the use of the schools for our, the Same About Youth League. Didn't make it to the action items on the agenda tonight, but under your current policy, non-affiliated baseball and softball programs are not allowed to have access to the gyms. And we are requesting that you review that policy, and we would like an exception made for our program. I mean, this is our community children, and there's things that we can do when we use the gyms to make it safer, like using safety balls. They're not like real softballs or baseballs. We can put up nets, you know, no batting practice, just pitching, throwing, and hitting off a tee. So, we would like to, you know, I've sent you our current insurance policy for year round. We are covered. We would like that to be put on the next month's agenda, to take action upon. If we could come to, you know, if you need to make some, if we need to make some changes to make that exception happen, we'd like to sit down with you and discuss it further.
That will be up to the board to actually make a decision to put it on the agenda. I know that I had personally said that I would recommend against doing that, and I'm not necessarily saying that I'm reconsidering what my recommendation would be, but if the board would decide to do that, I would be willing to help as far as letting the group into the building and maybe doing some research myself and seeing how many kids show up on a given night, and it's something that they could maybe open up and do a trial and see how it goes, and like you said, there are safety things that you can do on your end, and if those things are being done, then I can come back and report before you, say, this is what figured out, I think that this is something that we could go ahead and do. I would have concerns about live hitting and things in any of our gyms without some sort of cage or protection, or, and I also know that in our gyms, they're really not designed for softball, and sometimes using an actual softball mars the floor, could be damaged, break windows, et cetera, so, again, without having, I guess, all of that information of what you would provide as far as assurances that we would try our best to protect the property, I don't, again, it'll be up to the discretion of the board whether to put that on or not. I would be willing to help out.
Okay, great. And then, the last item that I wanted to brought up, there's been a lot of talk about the school funding bill, and back and forth over Governor Ritter's veto. Have you done any research into this, and did his veto, would it have helped our district in funding, or would it have hurt our district in funding?
I haven't put a lot of research into what his mandatory veto would do, because I guess I would rather just deal with factual information and numbers that are solid and sound. When I present the budget, I have been very cautious as far as our revenue, and I'm currently basing that on revenue from last year, and I just don't, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense to spend a lot of time on what ifs and what might happen, and if this happens, what are we gonna do? I can tell you that at our last audit, we had 178 days of cash on hand, and basically what that means is, we could operate 178 days. And if you look at that in months, that would probably put us through the end of December. And that is just strictly with money on hand. That doesn't account for any revenue coming in from now until December, which we would have tax money coming in. With that additional, again, I hate to give dates, and because you never know what can happen as far as expense-wise, but what I would, what I would recommend the board to doing, if nothing's been passed by December, we take a look and see where we are at that time and decide whether we want to go into March, and at that point, I think we could have the money to do that, and from that point forward, probably March to the end of the year, we would have to look at, talking about tax anticipation warrants, and that's basically just what it sounds like, is that we sell basically bonds or take out loans for the revenue that we're projected to come in, and when that revenue comes in, then we pay off tax anticipation warrants. I think that's probably how a lot of districts will handle it, I'm not sure, but again, because a lot of people aren't, I personally don't believe that they're going to allow this to go on. I can't imagine them not having a class of 2018, so, I'm trying to deal with what I know and do the best job of managing resources again.
Good. Thank you. That answers the questions I had for the senior.
So, moving on to Eye of the Storm.
Okay. First off, we have Mr. Scannavino and the Gap Program.
I just want to, before I introduce my two students that I brought, express my thank you to the school board and to the administration of all buildings that helped raise awareness of culture and language with our exchange programs here. Very successful here at Salmon Valley to have one in Germany and one in Spain for our students who are learning Spanish and German, as well as to open it up to those who, maybe they're not in Spanish or German, but they have interest in world travel, and get them out and about, and expand their horizons from just Nyana, Caristown, and Eliopolis. So, in June, 29 students went with myself and Mrs. Hawkins and my mom and my sister, and we went to our partner school in Germany, which is located in the wine area of Germany along the Rhine River. We spent three weeks at our partner school. Students were hosted by the kid that they hosted here in the fall, and they got to attend this school, which is a gymnasium, different structure in Germany in their education system, so that's grades five through 13, which is the academic high school that prepares them for college. We got to go to Munich for a couple days on our own as a school trip, and then they took us around the area and showed us their state of Rheinland-Palatinate, or Rheinland Falls, in German. You would be very proud of the 29 students. I was very proud of them, because when they were at school, they were giving presentations about Salmon Valley High School, about our communities, about our state, and several German teachers came up to me and complimented me on the behavior of our students, on their presentations, and how well they did. And the student, or the teacher that I stay with, Ms. Yung, said, you know, that really means something, because German teachers don't give out compliments unless they really mean it. So, that made me feel awesome, that we were well-received in Germany and well-thought-of by the school district over there. They're very happy with us and are looking forward to the next exchange. Ms. Yung has retired, so there'll be a new teacher that will replace her and come, they've already selected her, but Ms. Kretzler will be the head, who was her assistant this time. And again, we're looking forward in a couple weeks hosting our Spaniards from Madrid. They'll be with us on September 2nd through the 26th, so, we're fortunate to have them, and Anna, the teacher that's coming, would like to dress you guys in September, just to say a personal thank you for hosting her students from Madrid. And I brought with me two students, and of course Ella, who's also here, and they would just like to just tell you a couple things really quick about their experiences in Germany. So I have Abby Mann, Andrew Duncan, and Ella here with me.
Hello, members of the board. I've come tonight to talk to you about the wonderful time we had this past June on our Gap program. It was very educational, from learning how to comprehend German signs, to ordering at the bakery, and to even just trying to make conversation. Our partner school, Europa Gymnasium, welcomed us with open arms, as did our host families. During our trip into Munich, we also got the opportunity to grow as individuals in seeing places like Dachau and in riding the German train system. That was an experience. I would have to say that my favorite part of this experience was seeing the many beautiful sights that the country had to offer and learning about their history. One of the biggest points of this trip was how maturely and seriously my fellow students handled this. Because of this, the trip went without major incident. Most of all, this exchange is and continues to be a great opportunity for students from the school to learn and grow through international experience. None of this would be possible without the commitment of Mr. Scannavino, our chaperones, and the continued support of Youth the Board, as well as parents and the community. Thank you all for this experience that left all involved with memories that'll last a lifetime. Thank you.
So, on behalf of, I guess, all 29 of us on the Gap Exchange, I'd like to thank all of you guys, as well as Mr. Scan and his mother and sister and Ms. Hawkins for allowing this to happen. I would say, one of my favorite parts of the trip itself was probably the school system, just because of how different it is getting to experience that, you know, instead of being from, you know, the school district, from preschool all the way to my senior year now, getting into a different, I guess, way of things work there is a lot, you know, how to describe it, it's different, I can say that. You know, it's, they go from like class to class, but so do the teachers, so you never know which room you're gonna be in. So I was, you know, following my German morph around, and he was always asking what class they're gonna be in that day, so we were always messy. You know, I agree with Scan that the German teachers don't really hand out compliments unless they mean it, so, and they handed them out, you know, felt like they really meant it. The food there was also really good. Love the food there. It was an overall really good experience. If I could, I'd talk to everybody and recommend it. I enjoyed it. I know that most of everybody there enjoyed it. I was sad to leave, but at the same time, I was kind of relieved to be back in America. Just, I don't know how Spain is on that exchange, but I would probably say it's good as well. So, you know, I enjoyed it, I think everyone else enjoyed it, and I would highly recommend it.
On behalf of all the future exchanges that we hope to have, and all the students participating in that, we'd like to thank the board for letting us be able to host and be able to go across seas and experience a once-in-a-lifetime thing that not every school is to do. And for all the future exchanges, I want to thank Scan and his parents and their parents for putting up the patience and the money and putting forth the effort for getting us over there, because that's, that was amazing being over there. You don't get, you don't get that just going, it's like Canada or something, you go to cross seas. So, it was a really fun experience. I won't forget it, ever.
And on behalf of their principal, Ms. Visser, she came to me, one of the last days of the exchange, and said that she's really appreciative of everything that Salmon Valley does for Europa Gymnasium, and she wanted to thank you guys personally, but she couldn't be here, obviously, so instead, she surprised me and brought 12 wines, bottles of wine that she had bought, and shipped them over here for me, so I have those to present to each of you as a thank you from Ms. Visser, the principal at Europa Gymnasium, for hosting our exchange programs here at Salmon Valley. So, thank you very, very much, so.
Mr. Scan, I know we thank you for continuing to run the program, and it's a great opportunity. Do you know how many districts in our area get to do something like this?
The only other district that I know is Rochester, because Rochester started the exchange and when it expanded is when they contacted us to start it. And Spanish-wise, we're the only school in the area that has a Spanish exchange, although we have expanded ours in Mount Pulaski. When we're hosting the Germans, they also have now an exchange with our same partner school in Spain on the off-year, so, yeah.
We have a certificate here from the United States Department of State that recognizes Salmon Valley High School for the Gap Program, and I would just like to say that it says Salmon Valley High School on here, but without Mr. Scannavino, a lot of this probably wouldn't be able to take place, so, thank you very much. I know it's a lot of work for you and I know it touches so many kids, and it's such a great program, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Okay. And at this point, we move on to the consent agenda.
We've got one more.
Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry. I feel like I couldn't see all of you, I was moving along. Sorry.
Well, we do have Coach Sturdy and quite a few representatives of the Tri-City-Sammon Valley Cooperative Softball Team itself. I'll turn it over to Coach Sturdy.
Well, we're, and I, obviously, Mr. Field reached out to me earlier, and I talked to Mr. Meadows, and we wanted to recognize this group of the board meeting. If you guys followed this team, they had a fantastic season last spring. It was certainly a lot of fun. I know I enjoyed it a great deal, except for one day, maybe two, but it was a really good season, but, and first thing I want to say, I want to thank you guys. It is very, even though Tri-City is the host school, I will tell you that when we go to games, we see so many administrators and teachers from Salmon Valley that come to our games, and we really, the kids really appreciate that, that they come, and board members as well, I mean, they really appreciate the fact that, you know, they get support from both districts, and it's been really good. So, we had, we finished the season with a 32-2 record. We had a, we had a really nice start to the season, beat schools like Sacred Heart Griffin and Rochester to kind of early in the year, and then we had one hiccup against Athens, which, look at them, they're still cringing. And so, we, and so we went, but that was the only one, we won the rest of our games, we won our conference title. We've actually won six consecutive conference titles. The last, we have not lost in conference since April of 2011, so, we've had a, it's like 71 or 72 games, I have to check for sure, in a row, so, we've had a pretty good run. We have, we went through the rest of regular season. We were seeded, actually, we were third, you know, at the time we were in the postseason, we were like 29-1 or something like that, and we had our 28-1, and we had, we were still seeded second in our sectional, because the number one team in the state was also in our sectional. And so, we went through our regional, we had a, first game in regional actually was against Athens. We got them out in the first game, we scored 11 in the bottom of the first, so, they wanted to make sure they kind of got that one, got that one back. But then we beat Pleasant Plains to win the regional title. It was a great game, came down to the wire, we scored in the, you know, top of the seventh and beat them. Then we beat the team that had made the sectional finals the year before, Gillespie. We beat them 6-1. The next day, we had to play back-to-back because of the rain, and so we beat them. And then, of course, I know many of you probably saw the game, the sectional final was probably, you know, I played a lot of softball and coached a lot of softball, and that was one of the greatest atmospheres that I've ever seen for a high school athletic event. They sold over 800 tickets to the game, paid admission to a high school softball game at Williamsville against the number one team in our sectional and the number one team in the state. They only had one loss as well. We were 31-1, they were 33-1 at that time coming into the game. It was one of those games, I mean, I can't even describe it, I know it was epic, I mean, it was one of those things, we, we had, they scored early, and we hit a homerun, Aubrey hit a homerun, and they, they had their, they hit a homerun, Peyton's hiding her face because she made a mistake on that one, but, no. But we came back, and then, in the last inning, we had, and this is just kind of a testament to these girls, where we had first and second, nobody out, and Taylor's up, and Taylor hits a line shot to second base, and the second baseman makes a great catch, doubles us off first base. It was like one of those plays, it's just bad luck. And right there, you were thinking, that's it, you know, it's bottom of the sixth, and you know, we're gonna end up, you know, this is gonna be it, and so, but then Georgia Miller gets a base hit, and then Ashlyn Morlock, small girl on the field, rips one in the gap, and Ella comes around and scores, and we beat them 4-3 to win the sectional on their field in front of a great crowd. It was, it was great. We lost the next, we lost in the super sectional, St. Joag, and we went on to win their state semifinal game 13-0, so they were pretty good. We had, we had got off to a rough start that one, and we just couldn't ever get back over the hump, but, you know, these girls had a magical season. We had three girls make All-State. Katie Jarrett, Aubrey Hunt, Peyton Sturdy were all, were all All-State. We had six girls get named All-Conference. Haley Patrick, in addition to the three All-Staters, Haley Patrick, Taylor Page, and Georgia Miller. So, all those girls made All-Conference, so, we're just really, really happy, we had, it was really a fun season, and the thing was, we had a lot of fun, too, I mean, except for that one day. No, it was, it was a lot of fun, even, and you know, it's one of those things where, and I told them this afterwards, it wasn't necessarily, you aren't sad that you lost the game necessarily, the last game, because everybody loses their last game, you're just kind of sad. We were more sad because it was over, because it was such a fun, fun ride, and so that's a testament to these kids. I'm gonna introduce it to them, just so you don't know, Ella Rutherford, she, Anna Sagel, Taylor Page, that was you, Anna, oh wait, that's, Aubrey Hunt, Ashlyn Morlock, Caitlin Spain, Ashlyn Sturdy, Peyton Sturdy, Carissa Edwards, Haley Patrick, a couple of our coaches are here, Kelly Hunt and Gary Bailey, and then our statistician, our scorekeeper right here, Tim Patrick, so, they all made it out today. So, we just want to thank you guys again for having us. Peyton's got the sectional plaque. I will say, from a Tri-City standpoint, I, I don't know about Salmon Valley, but it is the, it's the first team, high school team from Tri-City to make the Elite Eight in sports. They had a Sweet 16 team that makes the super sectional back when they were two classes in '87 in basketball, but it's the, that's the, it's the second team to make the supers. So, we were, we're pretty proud of that, and so, you know, again, we lose five seniors this year, but we're excited, we feel like we'll still be pretty good next year, so we're excited about it. So, thank you again, just kind of give them a round of applause. Great kids. And I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give Mr. Field a little bit of credit because he wrote each one of the girls a personal little card that, that to tell them, congratulations on a great season and so forth, and that's just, that's just first class. So we really appreciate that, so, thank you.
That Williamsville game, I mean, that's the least I could do. That was the most exciting softball game I've ever seen. It was great.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and congratulations, girls, thank you for having us.
On the watch. Have fun this year. And thanks to all the coaches and statisticians and everybody else. Great job.
All right, girls, you can get out now.
Welcome to stay for the budget call.
We're cutting our fur. Now, at this point...
Do you mind if I switch the order a little bit? And the reason I'm, um, we received some of our new used buses, and I'm gonna let Ryan speak a little bit about what's been going on with a handful of those. And, um, at seven o'clock, we have six buses coming in from, um, from K to Key because of some issues we're having with any buses. Something that I think is easily fixed, but it seems like it's a widespread problem, and we're at a difficult time of getting parts because of such a widespread problem. So I, I wanted to turn that over to Ryan first and turn the transportation report over so he can get through that and get out and get to the buses.
I'd like to thank the board for allowing the purchase of the software. It has been a lot of work. I spent a lot of time on it, but it has been beneficial. I spent the evening over at Elia Office this past Monday. I answered a lot of questions for some parents. The majority of them were very impressive, but so far, it's working well. The longer I work with it, the more I find different ways to do it that makes it even better. So I'm kind of looking forward to go on with it. Did y'all get a copy of the routes that I printed off? I tried to spread, three of them there to spread it out across the district so you can get an idea of how they run.
Ryan, for the sake of paper, I made them a copy of Sarah's and Becky's.
Okay.
And then shared that with them.
Okay. Is there anything that I could explain or that doesn't make any sense or...
No, I think they looked really thorough, um...
I've always wondered how, when you have sub-drivers, and I know our sub-drivers are pretty familiar with, with all the routes, but you still have, you know, the routes change so often.
They, they're changing by the minute this time of year. They change by the minute.
I think this is a great opportunity for some accountability as far as, you know, this lays it out where the kids are gonna get off and who's supposed to get off and what time and...
There is no questions or haggles, if I can say that, between the drivers of which student belongs on what bus. It's right there. This student is on your bus. It's done and over with. All that kind of bickering, if I can say that, is gone.
Does it make changes easier, like if a parent sends a note on a Monday morning saying, Bobby needs to ride this bus in the afternoon, does, does this also make that easier? Or are they still handled the same way?
Yeah, uh, just an example, I got a, a new student. It was about 3:30 this afternoon, I was, got a call and asked to put a new student on a route in the morning. And I did that amongst other things I was dealing with this afternoon in about 40 minutes. But I was also answering phone calls. But the thing about when you put a new student in, depending on where they live, it changes the pickup times and the drop-off times. The part that's hardest and takes the longest is notifying the parent of the change of pickup time and drop-off time. And I have been getting a lot of those calls, a lot of this time of year. But it's nothing that we're doing wrong, it's just the additions and subtracts of students as they change addresses, which is quite frequent right now.
Should the software help you see the most efficient route?
Yes, it does.
Did it cut down bus times? I think we cut out the whole route last year, didn't we?
Uh, I, I did cut a, an afternoon route. I just completely cut it out last year. Uh, another thing about this software, and I tried this last year, and it worked. I surprised myself, to be honest with you. But you can click on reverse, and it will automatically reverse the route. Just that quick. But then you go back to notifying the parents of the different times. And I got a lot of calls when I did that, but it worked, and it works real, real good, real good. Makes it real easy.
I do like how, how it has the list of, of every student on the route.
Yes.
Their emergency contacts, their address.
Yes.
You know, that, that is good for if there were ever any sort of issue or anything.
Uh, yeah.
Do we, do we foresee, and this is very speculative, so maybe I shouldn't even ask, but as, as the district changes next year, as we begin looking at attendance centers, and of course, bus routing is a hot, hot button item when it comes to that. Is this going to assist us greatly since that's going to be a bit of a transportation issue?
Good question. I've been, I've been thinking about this since last year when it was first presented to me, this change coming up. And as I've been working with this, actually, the attendance centers are going to make it even easier. It's gonna make it even easier on, on the bussing.
Speaking from a former administrator here in this town, this is wonderful. The system years ago with the cards and they'd sit, yeah, yep, this is wonderful.
It, it cuts out all the guesswork, and it cuts out all the haggling amongst the drivers, and it just, it's plain. Here it is. No question.
I'm glad to see that the purchase was worth it, and it's doing what it should be doing, so...
Yeah, yeah, I like it. I like it.
And, uh, somebody else needs to be recognized is not here, is Tracy David.
Yes.
The three of us sat in the training last winter, and, um, they put a great deal of time. There is a lot of, you know, input, obviously, that they have to sit down and do on their computer, and they were here, uh, a good portion of the summer leading up to school. So Tracy's been a important part of it as well as helping out, so she should be recognized.
Yes, she's, she's been a lot of help. She's very good on the computer.
Do you want to just quickly explain what, if you can, what's going on with, um, the buses?
Yeah, uh, the new buses have arrived through the summer, and one of them even showed up with what they call a DEF sensor. The, the DEF liquid that, that's in the exhaust, that helps clean the exhaust out. There's a sensor in there that not only, uh, checks the level of the tank, but it also checks the quality of the DEF. Well, it's the quality part of the sensor that's not good. The, the DEF is supposed to be at 23.8, and it's reading 9.7, which is a low reading. So then it sends a signal to the computer of the bus to say, hey, you got some bad DEF, shut it down. And that's what's been happening. They actually delivered one last summer that was on a D-ray mode. It wouldn't go. I said, well, what am I supposed to do with this? It said, well, we're gonna send the guy and get it fixed. Okay, well, they did that. Well, then I took the boys over a couple of weeks for baseball practice, and I had another one do that. A week later, we got it fixed. Well, the first day of school, which was yesterday, I had two of them go down, and I had another one go down today. No doubt in my mind at this point, it's gonna go right on down the line. To be quite honest with you, about noon, I was sweating bullets. What are we gonna do here? Because without buses, we got no kids. Without kids, we got no school. So I got on the phone with a couple of people from Midwest, and I, uh, pretty much got across to them that I'm not real happy, that we need to do something here, we got a problem. And finally, about 5:00, we come up with this suggestion. They're gonna bring six buses tonight to try to fill in as we get the other ones going again. But the problem is, right now, they don't have any sensors. They don't know where they're gonna come from. Needless to say, they have no idea when they're gonna get here. So it's, uh, it's been quite hectic here this, this week. Not only dealing with the bus services, but dealing with all the changes in riding. It's, yeah, it's been a little...
Big first week. Uh, they're gonna allow us to use those buses then indefinitely?
Yes.
Until they get the bar?
Yes. They, they're bringing six tonight.
Is there any cost to the district for those?
We have to put insurance on them.
Are they certain that it's the DEF sensors and not the DEF itself, who supplies the DEF?
No, it's the sensors, because we checked our, our DEF. And actually, the DEF that's in the tank now come from their facility in K to Key. I thought it did too. But when the, when the guy come here to, to do his diagnostics on the computer, he had the tester, and, and it's good. It's good DEF. There's nothing wrong with it. It is the sensor. And at this point, like I said earlier, it's, it's gonna go right on down the line. All 16 of them are gonna go. And I didn't think they'd go this quick, but they are, and it's very nerve-wracking.
I'm not sure if the insurance will be an additional cost of just transferring that from one bus to the other. It happened so late in the day, we've not been able to get a hold of, leave room, to use our insurance man. Contact him for Sunday morning and get those buses taken care of.
Thanks for the purchase of the used bus too. We've already used it, so... And the driver was quite happy with it. She said, I, I can do this. It's okay. It's good, good.
Great. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right, we're gonna go back to order now?
Yes, sorry. Just want to make sure you're able to be down there, I understand.
Yeah, time running short. All right, so at this point, we will now move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions? So now I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So, Cindy Urban, is there a second?
Second.
Eric Pearson, Paul Roll, please. Solera, yes. Kent?
Yes.
Lee Hart, yes. Pearson?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Wildy?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
And so for the director?
Uh, first up, I have, uh, the district enrollment numbers as of right now. Like I said, just like Ryan kind of mentioned, we have, uh, kids registering the day that school started, and today, and so I will come back in the end of September with some updated numbers on this. But currently, right now, I was, I was happy to see that, um, the numbers at kindergarten at the East Campus, have gone back up to 34, and 22 over at the West Campus for a total of 56. First grade, uh, 24 at the East Campus, 21 at the West for 45. Second grade, 36 and 19 respectively for 55. Third grade, 39 and 24 for a total of 63. Big class. Uh, fourth grade, 25 and 20, 45, and fifth grade at 47. So 158 kids, uh, at Sangamon Valley East and 153 at Sangamon Valley West. And you can see based on last year's numbers, we were at 141 in both buildings at the start of school last year. So we're seeing more students that are lower levels, which is a good thing because that will continue to carry on into our other buildings. So, uh, at the middle school, sixth grade at 55 this year, 52 in seventh and 65 in eighth grade for a total of 172. Ninth grade, 52, 10th, 65, 11th, 61, and 12th, 60, or 238. The total district, district enrollment of 721, which basically represents about a 5.5% increase in our number.
We did have a few numbers that were, we had to strive with some people this year at some schools because...
We did have, because, um, in first, third, and fourth, um, we tried our best to try to balance out the class sizes a little bit, and, uh, so Valerie reached out to, uh, some parents and was able to, you know, kind of look at the, the district geographically and then contacted, uh, some parents, and we actually were able to move, uh, some of our fourth graders, did I say fifth? It should have been first, third, and fourth, uh, over to the, the West Campus to try to balance that out.
The biggest point being is if we had attendance centers this year, we wouldn't have done that.
We wouldn't have had to worry about it.
The toggle, but...
But the parents were very understanding and agreed to it, and that helped out tremendously. And then, the budget. As I mentioned in my email to you, probably the budget summary and the cash summary is probably the easiest way to go over the budget. And I make copies for you, um, both of those. And again, it's probably best that we look at one fund to kind of make our way down through there. Um, our beginning fund balance, our head fund, was 584, 254. And we're looking at, uh, total receipt, the revenues coming in. And again, this is kind of a low estimate because of the state numbers, of $5,651,13. And our total disbursements are estimated at $5,677,952. And that puts our head fund in a deficit of 27,839. Again, I'm basing the revenue, um, low based on last year's numbers. So I'm hoping that, um, that will come in, and we'll be, we'll see a higher number in the revenue category, and then that will balance out the head fund. Um, operation maintenance, we have a beginning fund balance of 541,612. And we're looking at total revenue coming in this school year at 496,365 in that fund. And we're looking at expenditures for that fund at 545,834. And again, for this fiscal year, we're deficit spending by 49,469. And a lot of that can be contributed to, uh, some of the work, the extra manpower that we're doing in the buildings, uh, making improvements. So, uh, I don't think we'll see a lot of change in the revenue as far as the operation maintenance goes. But we're probably looking at roughly a $50,000 deficit in operation maintenance just for this year, not the overall fund balance. It would be in the black, and we'll go over that in a second. Moving over to transportation, uh, we have 411,335 as a beginning fund balance, with expected revenues at 170,455. And we're looking at expenditures of 160, sorry, that skipped over one.
Yeah.
411,335 was the beginning balance. Receipts and revenues, 625,840, 844. And with expenditures at 683,178. That is a deficit of 57,334. And that can basically be attributed to the used bus that we purchased that is going on this fiscal year. Well, without that, we would be, uh, in the black for this year in transportation. And again, that, those figures are based upon what we received this year. So I think we can, we'll end up much better than that, hopefully. In the capital fund, that is our 60 count, that brings in, or accounts for our sales tax revenue. We have a beginning fund balance of 516,903. I project it will take in roughly, um, $250,000 in that account in revenue this year. And we will expend probably around 407,50, which is a deficit spending of 150,250. And one of the reasons for that, as I explained in my email, is that we have, um, we're starting paying back this year, the... we're starting paying back this year the debt certificates. Pay that off over the course of the next four years, starting in December. And that's roughly a hundred thousand dollars. And then, we also had the expense of the gym roof replacement, which is two hundred and five thousand dollars. So, there's a good chunk of all those went into this fiscal year. And so, that's why we're showing right now that large deficit. And again, that's just this school year. The last one, fire prevention and safety. Beginning fund balance of two hundred and twenty-three thousand and fifty dollars. We do not take in a lot of money in that fund. We're gonna take in forty-five thousand, three forty-one. This year, we're spending seventy-seven, seven twenty. And that is a deficit of thirty-two thousand, three seventy-nine. And again, we're paying off some of those health, life, safety things that we did over the summer. The bleachers, the windows at the middle school, the eat-dress window, or eat-dress door in the cafeteria at the elementary building as well. So, that's why we have those expenditures coming out this time. So, that is the budget summary. Probably the main thing to look at over on page four, the cash summary, is our ending cash balance of each fund is the bottom line twenty-one on this form. And you can see that the head fund, we're gonna end at five hundred fifty-six thousand, four fifteen. Operation maintenance at four ninety-two, one forty-three. Transportation, three fifty-four, zero zero one. Our capital projects at three sixty-six, six fifty-three. And fire prevention and safety will finish at one ninety-six, seventy-one. And then, we also have a million and a half in working cash that the district has not had to dip into yet. So, that is the budget. And again, when you look at it, you see the funds that are in the red. Where we have some new funds in the red, a lot of the victims were doing things, fixing things in the district. Anything want to work on? Anything want to work on? Hopefully, the state will come through with the money that they at least give us what they say they're gonna give us. That would be fantastic. We'll be alright. Or they prorate and just decide not to pay a mandated category of what makes them earn it. That's the best I could do with the budget. I spoke to a couple other superintendents and they're all, you know, we're all in the same boat. We're not sure what we're gonna get.
Mr. Trigg, is it correct that we already passed the first date? It was like about this tenth for mandated categoricals? And there's another one coming up later on? So, they already missed date first payment?
We've actually received a couple of the mandated categoricals from... They say, and this is what they do, well, this is from last year, the ones that we missed. So, we have received some revenue from that, but it will eventually get to the point where it'll get to the end of the year and... I hope not. Maybe I'll be wrong. I hope I'm wrong. But that's not to the balance. And we've not received any, and we won't receive any general state aid until they decide. So, the, anything that we've received so far this year have been based upon last year's numbers. If you go on their website and you look at the fris inquiry that I print out occasionally for you guys that shows the different mandated categoricals and what has been released to the comptroller and what we're budgeting and all that, they're all zero down there. Also, next to the... It's a great budget.
Any other questions? Alright, so we can move on to... First of all, your report.
You're gonna be present agenda?
I just got the...
I tried to do it twice.
Because I mean...
We had some faculty trainings that we got underway right before the beginning of the year. Part of that was to help out our people that are piloting our new reading program and also our special ed teachers from sixth to twelve. Who will be working with the new reading series this year in the well, which is an intervention series, that's a level literacy intervention for phonics and phonem. That and the new elementary curriculum, which is also phonics and phonem classroom. Work by leveling students by their reading level. And what we had training on was called a benchmark assessment. So, basically, like a daily reading record. Very comprehensive to see where kids are at, what their strengths and their weaknesses are. And then, to help design instruction around that. And so, it's kind of the whole philosophy of the new system rolled into a three-hour training for those people. So, it was a lot to buy it off that day. But I think gave them a real insight into looking at the new program, how comprehensive it is and how this was like the first step and the first way to buy to that, to get going. The special ed teachers also, with the literacy intervention, also bases its instruction on that baseline data that they get from that. And they'll give that as a benchmark three times a year to the students. Take them a day or so, a couple days, to get everybody squared away and assessed on that. In addition to that, the special ed teachers also underwent trainings in the actual curriculum that they'll be implementing and how to work with that. We've got another training scheduled for later on in the year, about halfway through, so that they can kinda see where they're at, what the kinks out. But they seem excited about it, to have something, you know, kinda set out something that was very explicit in instructional strategies that has a lot of stuff with the reading strategies and phonics and all that combined into it. And then, they also, the same day that they had that training, came to another training for an independent reading program that we're piloting this year through the special ed rooms called Reading Plus. I had done some research on some different things and we piloted a few things, a few teachers just trying some trials. And I actually got in contact with Mark Strawn, who's the director at SATS Ed at Springfield. And they use this program with every student in the SATS Ed districts. And they cover pretty much all of Sangamon, rural county, and then Indian Coop. And he's used it with those students for the last three years. So, they have a lot of data based on, really a lot of improvements and jumps that they've seen with that program. So, I thought it was worth giving it a try for a year just to see how the teachers like it. It gives really good reports. It's independent reading and it is the first program of any kind that I've seen for students who struggle that actually addresses visual acuity. A lot of them address comprehension and fluency, which this does. But it also works on visual acuity. For those of you that have not had your vision classes, what visual acuity is basically is, students are dyslexic and some that have other learning disabilities. Visual acuity is kinda like the muscles in your eye, the training. And a lot of times, kids can't track words correctly when they read them across the page. And this uses kind of a highlighting device to help students learn how to track those words along while they're getting their one-on-one instruction or instruction outside of their regular reading classroom in Title I. But to help them practice those things. And they can also use this program at home. They can use it over the summer with their parents if they would like to do that. And we haven't seen it in action yet because we haven't even got the kids signed on to it just yet. But it's very exciting and if it's used with fidelity, the folks that I know who have used it just rave about it. They think that it's really good and they say that the students enjoy it. It's very engaging. So, I'm excited to see kinda how that goes. And I think the teachers are excited to have another resource available to them as well. So, that's kinda what we did that first week and a half before school started. We hit the ground running. So, it's pretty cool, exciting stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, whole business. We have the discussion on the topic of eighth grade promotion. So, Mr. Trigg, I think you were wanting to provide to us your thinking on that.
Yeah, I know. Talk about doing away with an eighth grade promotion ceremony kinda sounds like I'm trying to be negative. A lot of it stems from getting to know the middle school kids. We have a lot of kids that do really, really good things at our school. And it's not the ones that, you know, are the best athlete or the best singer and things like that. We rarely get a chance to honor them outside of the school day. We rarely get a chance to honor them outside of the newspaper, things like that. Then I started thinking about promotion. You know, why do we have an eighth grade graduation? That's what a lot of people refer to it as. You know, a lot of people don't realize that it started in the fifties from inner-city schools because it was trying to promote going to high school. They wanted you to go to high school. Started in rural communities because that was a decision-making time whether you had to go work on the family farm or go to high school. And I thought now, you know, in two thousand seventeen, one, I might have one kid in my eighth grade class issue or work on a family farm. And I expect all my kids to go to high school, graduate high school, and then move on from there. So, my thought process behind it is it's kinda antiquated. I've spoken to other principals, middle school principals, and they're all moving away from it. Moving forward more to that award ceremony type of thing because we expect our kids to go to high school. It's really between Mr. Field and I was talking about that. It's not a question. You're going to high school and you're gonna be successful hopefully and move on from there. I look back and talk about the planning of eighth grade graduation. We only give out three awards. And if you sat during eighth grade graduation in May, I think this year, the temperature in the room was ninety-five degrees. And if you're wearing a suit or a dress or anything, you felt every bit of that degree. I got done with the ceremony in twenty-two minutes. It took us nine man-hours to set up a gym for a twenty-two-minute ceremony. And that's why I've recognized, you know, if I've recognized the kids, the planning and things like that. I have kind of my list of why we should change. And over the past, you know, three years of me being at the middle school, more of my complaints stem from the eighth grade promotion ceremony. Whether it's my kid didn't get this award or I think it's stupid you have to have a dress code, you know, to that thing. Whereas, my thought is if we're celebrating the kids, we're gonna, we're gonna look back why we do it. And we even got one so far as I had to call the police after one ceremony because somebody didn't get the award and, you know, the man's father threatened fighting after the promotion ceremony. That's not what we're there for. We're there to celebrate our kids and talk about that. I have brought in some kids on this, ones that I knew that were gonna be opposed to it, listen to them. I've talked to parents, talked to my leadership team. And really, their only answer is why we should do it is we've always done it. And that was it. We've always done it. Sometimes, you know, it is tradition, but we can always look to be more, you know, progressive, honor more students and things of that nature. My thinking is we're gonna set that expectation a little higher. You know, let's talk about high school. Let's talk about college. Let's talk about what you're gonna do after eighth grade. I don't think a kid's educational career should be stemmed off of eighth grade. So, some things that my plan would be is to do away with it and have an award ceremony where we have a list that was compiled by myself with student input, teacher input, and leadership team input. And we have no less than thirteen awards that we'd like to honor students. I think last year with the five or six I gave out, one student received four of the six. So, it'll really be turned into that person's night, not the eighth grade classes. What I would like to do is have an award ceremony. The way we envisioned it as a leadership team was to do that in the morning of our last day of school. Because now with the state, they say, you know, there is no more eleven o'clock dismissal and that last day you go at two o'clock. And that would give us something new. Community would be welcome. Parents would be welcome. Everyone would be welcome. We would invite the rest of the school to come watch. All the other younger students would now get to see those awards being announced and set that bar a little higher. After that, I would like to have an eighth grade cookout after the ceremony, where the teachers, myself, would cook for them, you know, kinda rag with the year of the eighth graders that way. And then, later that night, we discussed having a dance for the eighth graders there at the school. You know, kinda give them that celebratory moment of their own that would allow them, that would be chaperoned and DJed by myself and the teachers. It really just kinda comes down to, we have so many kids doing some really good things that rarely get recognized outside of our school community. Now, with having an award ceremony, being able to branch out on that and, you know, celebrating more than just one or two kids who's gonna get every award. It's really kinda branch out and do that and be able to be more progressive. And it kinda falls through for others, some other schools are dealing. Doing away with that promotion ceremony because the days of encouraging going to high school because you live in an inner-city situation or a rural situation where you're gonna go work on a family farm are pretty much over for us. We want them to go to high school and set that bar a little higher. And to this day, I had one email from one student that was upset about it. And her and I had a very good discussion today. And she listened to my side. I listened to her side. She was very eloquent about it. But at the end of the day, she's like, yeah, I guess, you know, I'd be kinda mad if I didn't get the award that, you know, I worked my tail off for. And then, we just move on about our night. But she volunteered to help and plan if this was allowed. And I'd be more than willing to take on any kids' suggestions and help and make it about them, not about, you know, simply just doing it because we have to do it.
So, the... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so the awards thing would be in the morning?
And that's something that we always talked about because that last day of school, especially with the eighth graders, what are you doing? You know, Thursday nights are graduations. We come back Friday due. And then, the other kids, it's alright, we're here till two. How do we do this? How do we end up here?
So, do you have parents, have you heard any comments from parents saying, "Well, I'd like to see my kid do an award, but it's a work." I don't know if that's an issue or an issue.
That's an issue with eighth grade graduation now. We have parents that work night shift that... You know, I've heard from both sides where, why don't you do this in the morning? Because my eye works nights. And then, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna make someone upset because we do it tonight, we do it in the morning. If we did it at 2:00 AM, we'd probably make someone upset about that as well. But it's kinda dark if you do it, dark if you don't at that point.
Mr. Trigg?
Yes?
In regards to the award, yeah, we talked about how there were five or six awards that were... Or, excuse me, I don't remember the exact number you said were given out at graduation. But several of those, and talking about thirteen, don't we make up the category? By we, I'm assuming you and your leadership.
Yeah.
Don't you make up the categories for what those awards are for?
Yeah, the only one that we don't is the DAR. And that is something I don't, I don't wanna get rid of. That's a great award to hand out.
So, regardless of what the ceremony looked like or when it was or what it was called, you could still give out whatever awards you want?
Yeah. But sitting through that many on that night and being in that gym when it's, you know, you were there this year.
But we did mention that we were there for twenty-two minutes.
Yes.
So, adding seven or eight awards, we're talking a total of maybe a half hour now. And the other thing that comes to mind is, we spoke about the temperature. I was also in, and again, this is another discussion, not meaning to fear from that. But I was in two different school buildings today, which were upwards of ninety-five degrees during class in session. So, I sympathize with what awards are given out, but that's an easy fix regardless, in my opinion. And the temperature, and I agree with Mrs. Wellby as well, that I do, I absolutely know I've worked seconds and thirds. But I think traditionally, we can catch the majority of our parents. Certainly not all, but we can probably catch more than we would lose by having it of an evening time as opposed to during the working day. That's just my thing.
When would you plan for this to go into effect in the past? This year or would you wait a year or wait two years or what?
It's one of those things that kinda goes back to, you're probably gonna upset somebody no matter what year you put it in place. And the future, you wait, you have to catch another sixth grader that starts. I would like to see it done this year. It's not that I'm against it or anything, but it's just, it's gonna be unpopular with some people. It's just like anything else, if you make a change, it's gonna be unpopular.
So, if you take away the promotion for eighth graders, then you get any sort of, do they get a diploma? Or they just get nothing now?
And that's the discussion we're having with leadership. Do we still do that idea of promotion and the diploma?
Cause I guess from my perspective, I mean, I think eighth grade promotion is antiquated. I think for all the reasons you said, we shouldn't be, we should expect everybody to go on to high school. It's not that, you know, your education ends at eighth grade. So, I appreciate all that. But this is the one night that every single student, whether they win an award or not, the name is gonna be called and they're gonna get up there and they're gonna get handed something. And I think that means a lot to people. So, if we go through this, I would still like for you to see that you recognize every eighth grader and give them...
And that's something that my leadership team discussed. We were kind of all leaning in that direction as well. Because, you know, we want to make sure every eighth grader feels like they, you know, that's common or something.
Exactly. Exactly. Yeah. And when a person who has given out an award for thirty-some years now, you can't add more awards to that. Not feel like it's going to be so overwhelming.
Do you believe that the students are going to be more affected or the parents? Because on my end, I believe that this is more, it's going to be more for the parents than for the eighth graders, who may see it as just another night. Whereas it's a little bit of a break between eighth and when you get the proud moment of high school and then hopefully, or maybe later, college. But it's like a little bit of something for them. Or do you see that it's actually more of the students that are more interested and are going to be, you said there was only the one student that came out to you, but there's, is there really much outreach? How many people have actually heard of this? Or were thinking about getting rid of it?
Yeah. I actually started talking to parents about this last year. And as you guys could probably guess, there's more parents that you kind of understand how they're going to react to change. And they were the first ones I called and asked, hey, what are your thoughts on this? And one guy's exactly what you just saved me $500 to have him buy a dress when they're graduating. You know, like, he goes, I don't know why you guys do it anyways. And I said, well, you know, I'm more concerned, how's it going to be viewed from a parental perspective? You've got to have your ear to the ground on these things. And he goes, we've always had talks in our group. You know, it's just another night. And we're going to celebrate our kids doing great things regardless of any type of ceremony. You know, we know we have good kids, or, you know, we celebrate our kids every day when they do something well. The parents I've reached out to, I kind of thought would be the ones that would be here, you know, with pitchforks when I brought this up. They're like, no, we get it. You know, we want our kids to go to high school. We'll celebrate it when they graduate high school.
Yeah. I believe that that would be the majority of the case, but I would say that the amount of people, I just don't know how well that they are in tune with the board's agenda and what we are hearing right now. Or is there going to be a vast majority of parents that are going to get satisfied by this and say, wait a minute, I didn't know this was going to happen. I'm not saying they were looking forward to it since the day they were born, but still.
The ones I did reach out to, technically were more vocal, whether it's via social media or things like that. And, you know, they're in the different collective groups of sports parents and choir parents and things like that. So it's across all boards. And I started bringing in the kids last year, seventh graders last year, I knew would run rifles and tell a bomb and that. This is what we were talking about. And to each one of them, I caught either at registration or, you know, saw them over the summer. And I kind of stopped them and said, hey, what do you think? And they're, you know, we thought they're right. We don't know why we do it. They weren't upset. And I said, this is dope, sugarcoated. If you're going to be mad about this, now's your chance. And they're like, no, we really, like one, even use parallax, why don't you do this? Kind of. So, we have such good kids and such good families that, you know, they expect a little bit higher now. And the complaints we've dealt with over the past three years after eighth grade graduation, you know, I want to honor more kids. And I know I can fix that at the graduation ceremony and things of that nature. But I'm just looking forward to being more progressive. And it's an antiquated thing that we're doing and kind of following through some other schools that I'm unfamiliar with.
But to your point, it may help if you wait a year so that the eighth graders, we're thinking they're graduating.
It is possible. But I mean, if you've spoken with enough parents, it seems to be okay with anything. Because as you said, it's, we expect more. No, I don't think any parent expected, well, there it is, eighth grades, congratulations, you know, you did it. But it's, that's why I just wonder how much of it is just a ceremony that they wish to go see their kids, you know. It's, they don't watch as many school plays when they have all third graders involved. And it just becomes fewer and fewer events. So that's just my concern that I figured that you may. And even raising, you know, raising your awards to 13 over three to five or whatever, that still leaves 40 kids, the parents that are going to say, hey, I don't know.
No, I, and that's where, you know, I kind of joked with the parents of the young lady that got four of the six awards last year. I said, I should have just renamed it Your Daughter's Name Night and been done with it, you know? Because that's what it kind of felt like, was we were just recognizing the same person over and over and over again. But then I look at the crowd and I see some kids that have done some really cool things, not even related to school, you know, outside of the school year and stuff like that. That would be an opportunity for, you know, me in front of her peers, or their, his peers to say, you guys forgot about, you know, this young lady that did, you know, ballet, was a nutcracker on Springfield Theater. She only gets recognized because we talked about it at school.
And it's easier to do it more of an informal event?
Yeah, because people there, at a promotion ceremony, they don't want to hear about so-and-so that's a ballet and, you know, they want their kid to, they get called, let's go.
Are these additional awards that you're talking about, will they go to eighth graders or anybody in junior high?
I think for, to start, I would like to do just the eighth graders. You know, kind of a culmination of, you know, where they're at. And before you guys leave, I got a list of the awards and things I'd like to do. And it wouldn't just be academic. It's athletic. It's fine arts. It's everything. Our PBIS award for students with no behavior referrals, that's one that I think gets left out a lot. We have kids show up day in, day out, never misbehave, and they get, you know, outside of myself or a teacher saying, hey, you know, thanks for just being a good kid, you don't get that recognition. Perfect attendance, which to me, I think that's one of the biggest ones that gets left out is that perfect attendance. You showed up every day. And I'd like to see if we have a kid that did it for three years or has done it since day three, you know, do something of that nature. There's a bunch of different ones. And, you know, I'll give you guys a list before I walk out. But it's kind of how myself, the leadership team, and the students have, we've got this discussion type of this plan. Okay, so I'm just looking at honoring more kids. Me personally, I think it's kind of wasteful when one man takes nine hours out of two days to set up for a 20-minute ceremony, especially at the end of the year, very busy time, and trying to wrap things up. And just moving past to kind of like, you know, setting that bar a little bit higher for the next level. And not kind of giving that, graduate in eighth grade, you don't have to worry about freshman year high school. You know, it's kind of saying, okay, you're done with eighth grade, now let's start focusing on this.
I think my recommendation would be, I mean, if the board so chose to discontinue promotion, I'd wait two years. So that your sixth graders now would see it through. The ones that are in junior high now, starting this year, would get to graduate. So you didn't, you know, they start and then, oh, I don't get to do it.
And then your seventh graders now.
Is that right?
Six graders wouldn't, if you're doing two years.
Correct.
Register seventh.
But sixth is frightening.
But if you do only, if you put it up two years, you're going to have the eighth graders this year graduate, and then the ones that are seventh graders now will graduate.
Yeah.
And that's why I could speak to how those parents are going to react. Because I have not brought them in on that conversation. That's something if you guys chose to do it, I would probably would reach out, reach out some of them. I haven't learned which ones are the more vocal ones yet. That might take a little bit of time. But, you know, kind of, I'd like to do that, to pick their brains and see.
I think phasing it out would be a good way to do it. I'm not opposed to not doing it, saying it right. But I think if we all agree, and I'll agree with, you know, whatever we decide, but I think phasing it in or out.
I think if it cares, those that, you start saying now, we're not going to have graduation in two years, but for those that already expected it, they couldn't have their dress bought, you know, they're ready for it.
Yep.
I also think that regardless of what the board chooses to move forward with it, I think, one, we need to be very upfront in how we, whether you call it graduation or promotion, or whatever you call it, I think we need to be, we need to be forward-thinking in how we present that. Because I truly think we are underestimating the response we're going to get from parents if you send out an announcement that says, we're canceling eighth grade graduation. I think we are very much underestimating the response we're going to get from parents. I personally think moving into a daytime is a mistake. I think we're going to lose parents. And I think all the things that you want to do, and I buy into all of your reasonings behind it, I think you can do all that stuff anyway. You can do all that stuff on the last day of school because we don't know what to do with the eighth graders already. So we can do all of that. I don't like the idea of moving from a nighttime ceremony to a daytime. Maybe that's part of me personally, because I won't be there during the day. But I think we're going to lose a lot of parents. And I think we just need to be careful how we present that. Because I think we are going to get a lot of angry parents when they hear the phrase, we're doing away with eighth grade graduation. And of all the battles that we have to face, that doesn't need to be one, in my opinion. That's an easy thing to not turn into a battle. So I just think we need to be careful how we do it. I think phasing it out over a couple of years is probably a good idea. We will get some response.
Do you envision doing, you mentioned a dance, do you envision all of the staff coming? Are you just talking like a couple of chaperones?
I have spoken with the staff. And, you know, they said, barring any type of, you know, family emergency, they all come, most of them come to graduation. You know, they all tend to be there. They said it wouldn't bother them. They made that part of their, you know, kind of why I say, to be there and kind of celebrate that with the kids as well. The staff's great. You know, they're very supportive of the kids themselves. So I would envision most of them being there.
I just have the, you know, I agree with the evening thing. I do have concerns over the daytime events. I think it's hard to plan for those who are working parents because the majority are going to be, there are going to be some swing, like you said, but the majority will be daytime. But if we could, you know, potentially look at if we are going to phase it out, doing the evening awards that spills over, you know, do your cookout during the day, and whatever activity you can do within that day, do your awards, and then the kids stay and do the dance possibly, instead of making that awards thing in the morning as well. So that you will grab some parents that are going to be coming anyway to drop their kid off. And it can be a little bit more inclusive. You can get as many awards as you possibly can get. Because I do like, for the recognition, I don't know if you're going to call them awards, but I guess I would like to see that part be in the evening if it's going to be done away.
I think you might as well just keep the graduation.
Yeah. That's kind of my thought. If you're going to do it at night, keep the graduation and.
And not do the other.
Yep.
I don't know. I mean, how does everybody feel? I always thought, I didn't have an eighth grade graduation. So when my kid said eighth grade graduation, I was like, what are we doing this for? And it just wasn't something that I put a lot of stock into. Like, my kids are going to go on, they're going to go on and do other things. I don't have family that lives directly close by, so nobody was going to travel an hour and a half to come to a Thursday night graduation and turn around and drive back. So, I mean, in my mind, it doesn't really have that much of an effect. Obviously, my husband and I would be there. We would celebrate it and go on. But I know in a small community like this, you do have grandmothers, grandmothers, aunts and uncles and everybody that comes to it. So it's, you know, a little bit different from everyone's perspective, I guess. How does everyone feel?
I think it is. I just tried to say people had it because of the backlash they might not be expecting. I mean, I agree with all points. And I just, I think that eighth grade graduation is just not that, it's not that important personally to me. But I don't know how the public feels about it. And that's why it's critical. It's going to be a hard call.
I mean, maybe you keep it, you add a bunch of awards, and when people get sick of sitting there for an hour and a half, they're going to say, we don't want graduation anymore. I mean, in all honesty, you just add as much as you want to, but so.
How do we go about acting in motion at this point?
Well, I mean, we can continue with the same motion. And if it fails, it fails. And if it passes, it passes, right?
We're not making motion at all. And it stays as is.
You could always change the format of graduation to be more casual, to do, you know, can you call it, you know, eighth grade awards night, instead of promotion. It would still have the same effect, but it's just more casual. You don't have to go out and buy a $500 dress. And it's just.
So whatever they show up.
Or slow pants.
Then you have to, like, you know, the point I made earlier, I think it's important that you recognize each student. Because it's high school awards night, the only people that show up are people whose child is going to get an award. And that's not what you want here. You want everybody to be recognized somehow.
And you do it without the setup? Can you do it without the 50 chairs down the aisle? And everybody just uses the bleachers and, you know, have to have the.
Probably not going to have the room.
That would lend itself to, well, in my opinion, if we say that, and that lends itself to leaving it exactly how it is. If it's pretty packed, if this is one of the most heavily attended events of the year, then why do we want to get rid of that?
You said you spoke to other principals and other administrators. Who else has done this? Anybody locally? I mean, how was it planned?
Rochester does. They do it during the morning. They do an award ceremony during the morning and wrap up their year that way. At least three other same county schools are transitioning to it this year. And it was a simple, this is it. We're just not doing it this year. Because after, you know, year by year, they kind of dealt with the same thing I was dealing with where, you know, you didn't say my kid's name, or, you know, my kid did this outside of school. Why doesn't he get recognized now? And they just simply said, alright, let's set that bar a little higher at the high school. You know, we'll do an award ceremony. And I've stolen a lot of this format from other principals and leadership teams I've spoken with. This wasn't our brainchild is solely. It just came down to if this was an antiquated practice, and they wanted to know why we did it. They all sat in a room and said, why do we do this? And they all kind of went to each other and said, we've always done it. And that was the kind of same response I got from parents was, always done.
I think we're venturing in staff work. I don't think how it happens is up to the board. And the question for the board was, do we continue eighth grade graduation or not? And the way it, we either keep it, and we continue to have updates from Mr. Trigg on what he's thinking as we go along. And we can maybe give you some ideas on what we might like to see as it happens. But I think we're getting off track on what board work is as opposed to what staff work is. I think it's not our job to design how the program necessarily looks. It's just whether it happens as it happens now or not.
And we had discussed if the board didn't move forward with, you know, dissolving promotion, using that last day, that's a ceremony all day anyways. But the eighth graders are going to be, they're graduating on Thursday night. And that last, you know, they've been gone the past two years because of graduation on Thursday. So they either have to, I have to change the whole format of graduation or have a ceremony earlier, you know, prior to finals. And then I hit that argument, if I do a math award, science award, social studies award, well, I got an A plus on my math final now. So I'm the top math student. So that's just kind of work, the variables that I'm throwing in. So I think, and I'm kind of with Mrs. Leeper on this, where it's either we keep doing it and I try to improve it and also keep it a variable for people, or we do away with it and go for this. Either way, I fully understand both sides. We're just looking at how we recognize more kids and celebrate more students.
Well, I guess at this point, we just need to go through the motion. I might, I'm at the position, we're a small enough school, you know, I think at this point, my feeling is just keep going. And you need to alter it to fit how you think it needs to fit. And at such time, you can kind of update us and maybe revisit it again. But I'm going to make the motion and go over there and how's that.
Sounds good.
So the motion is actually to discontinue eighth grade promotion at the conclusion of the May 2019 ceremony. Do I have a motion? What else? Yep. Motion made by Eric Gerson. Is there a second? Is there a second? So no second, motion bells to pass.
I would say one thing, talked about it enough for the last three months.
Surely somebody knows.
Not aware of it. I don't really feel like it's our fault.
Yeah. Alright. So newsletter update, Mrs. Leeper.
Newsletter is probably 95% done. I've got a proof. And I'm just waiting for, we need to take a board picture after the meeting. So please don't leave until we get a quick picture. Once I get that submitted to her tomorrow, and a little bit of text in regard to the FFA picture, that's not right. I'll get that corrected. Then I'll have a final proof. And I will share it with Stephanie. And she'll distribute it to you. But our goal is to have that out first week of September, I think. have that out first week of September, I think. So we're on target to do that, so, great, it looks very nice.
Okay, and then our board resolution update?
The board resolution did not pass, which is surprising to all of us. Mr. Erman from New Berlin was very upset, surprised, because that was not the feedback we'd gotten from IASB before this all happened. I went that night, made our testimony.
Any feedback?
This is, I just, I won't go through it all, but this was their rationale, why they did not adopt it. It was a committee of twenty-nine people, I think, I had to present before, and a lot of counties, I was told, well, they, you know, they worked hard, passed this referendum, it shouldn't just be given to other counties, you should, you know, basically, we did the work, we need to do work too. Other counties chose to raise more monies through impact fees and real estate transfer taxes, so we were encouraged to do that, and they don't want to take away local control. Yet they seem to swing a different way on other issues when it comes to local control. So it's very disheartening for our first attempt. We have an option to, what do I want to say? We can go back over it, we can bring it back up, and I suppose it would have to be on the floor in Chicago, but Adam and I both talked about it, the feeling that night was not there. So we're going to let it settle a while, and maybe try to get some time with some of the committee members up in Chicago and talk a little bit more, and we can always bring it around next year or try again, but it's a no-go for now, so.
Thank you for trying.
You're welcome. We try something new.
Okay, on to new business, correct? And the approval of the tentative twenty seventeen eighteen district budget.
I presented the budget to you already, and I recommend I approve.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the twenty seventeen eighteen tentative school district budget.
So moved.
Motion made by Jeff Stahl, is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Kent, call Wolf, please. Leeper, yes. Pearson?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Woldy?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Leeper?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Leeper?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Woldy?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Leeper?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Woldy?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Leeper?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Woldy?
Yes.
Motion to employ Hunter Hill as a Sangamo Valley West Elementary Library Aid. So moved. Is that Martha Leeper?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Cindy Urban, call Wolf, please. Guerrero?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Leeper?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Woldy?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Motion to accept the FMLA request of Daniel Clark effective August ninth, twenty seventeen, and ending on approximately September eighth, twenty seventeen.
So moved.
Motion made by Jeff Stahl, is there a second?
Second.
Eric Pearson, call Wolf, please.
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Leeper?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Woldy?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Motion to accept the FMLA request of Daniel Clark effective August ninth, twenty seventeen, and ending on approximately September eighth, twenty seventeen.
So moved.
Motion made by Jeff Stahl, is there a second?
Second.
And Eric Pearson, call Wolf, please.
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Leeper?
Yes.
I need a motion to employ Amy Degenhart as Sangamo Valley East Elementary Music Teacher.
So moved.
Motion made by Eric Pearson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Jeff Stahl, call Wolf, please. Woldy?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Leeper?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Woldy?
Yes.
Motion to employ Kelly Kevlar as the Sangamo Valley Middle School Library Aid and AM Bus Monitor.